Harrison, well, Pearson wasn't. Harrison.
I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, June 11, 2018, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there are a few items in the table file.
Yes, we just had a couple of minor items added in the table file, including today's presentation for Jim Colse's position or Jim Colse's presentation this evening. And then, Madam Chair, I just want to also request that we are going to, I'm requesting that we remove item number five from the superintendent's report this evening for consideration at a later date.
Okay. Okay, we are acknowledging that, so we will move item number five for items for individual action as we move forward. Okay, so if there's no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward and make them one noted change to the agenda. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, just had a couple this evening. First, we want to recognize Jackie Magnuson, family consumer science teacher at Northfield Middle School. Along with her seventh grade students, donated 80 quilts to the Northfield Fire Department and Rescue Squad at the end of the 2017-18 school year. Over the last few years, Northfield Middle School and Mrs. Magnuson have donated 1,000-plus quilts to area police and fire crews, and we want to thank her for their work, her and her students for their work on the service project. And then again, you know, for people who maybe didn't see, we want to thank Jackie for, you know, a long and illustrious career at Northfield Public Schools as she retires at the end of this school year. So, just another great example of how our students are performing authentic work and contributing to the community. A couple of other pieces, you know, today was the official last day of the 2017-18 school year, two days longer than originally projected due to some poor winter weather that I'm not quite over yet. But we just want to thank, you know, everyone, all the staff, students, the parents, for really what was a wonderful 2017-18 school year. But it's not over for many of our teachers because our elementary grade level teachers were obviously here today for the workday, and then they're here tomorrow as well. Our elementary grade level teachers are engaged in training for the collaborative classroom literacy curriculum that is being implemented this fall. Two full days of training with professionals from the Center for Collaborative Classroom. And we're really grateful for these teachers' hard work as we prepare for what may be one of the most significant curriculum changes that we have seen in a couple of decades within our school system. So, I'm really proud of all of the work that's been done to this point. I'm really thankful and grateful for the teachers' extra effort right after the end of a long school year. But when you were in the room today, people were excited for the possibility that this new curriculum presents. When we have great people and we partner with great curriculum, you know that there's going to be positive outcomes. So, I'm really proud of Mary Grace Hansen, our instructional coaches, our principals, all the folks who have done a lot of great work to get us ready for this change. So, just know that school might be out, but teachers are still here working and getting ready for next year.
Excellent. Is there anything, any work members would like to add? Yes, Amy.
So, this year at the senior, I had the pleasure of volunteering for the lock-in. And I just wanted to thank all of the high school faculty and staff and a lot of parent volunteers that made this event possible for all of the seniors to keep them safe. It happens the night after their last day of school, and this starts at 10:30 at night and goes till 4:00 in the morning. And I was so impressed with the people there and the high school staff that are working till 4:00 in the morning plus, and then cleaning up, and then going home. And I don't know if they get any sleep that night coming back to work. So, thank you, Joel Lear, he was there, as well as quite a few other people from the high school. And my daughter attended, was there for the full five and a half hours and said it was much too short. So, that's how much fun it is, and I highly recommend it to anybody who has seniors coming up.
Excellent. Thank you. It is a great event. Okay. So, we will move to items for discussion and report. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Jim Colse, our Director of Building and Ground, providing an update on summer projects. And just as a reminder, his PowerPoint is in the table file. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. It's great to be back.
Welcome back, guests, from a well-deserved vacation.
Well-rested, yeah.
No rest for the weary, we see.
True. Well, for all of our hearty Minnesotans, now that winter's over, we realize that we're into our second season, which is construction. So, for us in the school business, that's also known as project time. So, for this summer, we've got a good variety of maintenance projects going on throughout the district, and I've highlighted some here, some larger ones with some photographs. So, one of the areas that we're looking at approving this year, and this photo is not photoshopped, it actually was from last summer, to recognize that as outside door 37 and the DO parking lot. A small water problem exists there, so to resolve that, we're going to be modifying, this is a Google map view that's been enhanced with the new design. We're going to change the sidewalk design and add a runoff garden to hopefully get rid of some of the ponding there, and hopefully get rid of some of the issues we've had with moisture in the building on that east side, as well as making it a lot easier to remove snow in that area in the wintertime without ruining the yard every year. In the safety area, virtually, well, all the kitchens except Longfellow have kind of the same scenario happening. This is in the dish room in one of the kitchens, and you can see they use the rubber mats on the floor. And in some of the kitchens, we've installed the anti-slip, the black pieces there that are adhered to the floor, and they're not wearing so well. So, back in the dish room, there's water constantly. So, what we're doing, we're eliminating the stick-on 3M pads. We're going to be eliminating the rubber mats, which you can't tell from the photo, but are actually quite thick and they're difficult to move those carts that you see around. So, we're going to eliminate some trip hazards there, and we're going to have some epoxy finish and a grit put on the floors in those dishroom areas this summer, again, in all the buildings except Longfellow. Here's a picture from last year from Sibley, and this is of the new counters and casework cabinets that we had installed. It doesn't show the sink or the fixture, but we did those also. But, so this year, we'll have three rooms being abated from the asbestos and mercury flooring, and with new carpet tile being installed, and then these new cabinets and countertops, sinks and fixtures going in to enhance those rooms. We had a great response from the staff there last year. They really liked the new flooring and the new cabinets provided a lot more space. This might look familiar. This is the middle school tennis court from last year. If any of you play tennis at the high school, you'll realize the high school courts aren't too far behind this. So, this year, we will be refurbishing and resurfacing the high school tennis courts. So, we're actually starting those, I believe, next week. So, the middle school courts will be open this summer, and the photo on the right is actually, that is our middle school court. So, they turn out really, it's just amazing, the work that they do. And we're having the same contractor, same contractor as did the middle school courts do the high school this year also. This area, it might be a little hard to see, but we're adding a wheelchair lift for the high school weight training room. So, the photo on the left is the level, the floor level there is at the gym floor level, and the next level up is the weight room level. And the only way you can get there with a wheelchair is to drive outside the building and up and through door five. So, what we will be adding is a one-story wheelchair lift, similar to the photo on the right, is actually, it's really close, if any of you have been to the middle school pool area where the bleachers are, it's pretty much identical to that. It'll be just a short six-foot rise. That will be happening this summer also. And working with Joel Lear, we've been working on our building security, and part of that will be some, Joel's working on some interior signage, and part of that was changing some of the exterior signage as well. And we had discussed rebranding door 10. So, this is a photo of door 10, which I'm sure all of you know, it's, it might be hard to discern where is the front entry of the high school, because there's really two of them. This will be rebranded the activities entrance. We'll have signage, I am not a graphic artist, but it'll look something like that. I did the best I could. But we'll have signage on the doors also indicating to visitors that they would need to proceed to door one to sign in. And this is our concept drawing of the secured entrance to the high school. So, starting from the bottom left, if you walk up and in, that's door one, the high school entrance. And instead of being able to walk straight forward in to that hallway and into the cafeteria, you will be directed into a Sally Court glass entryway, a closed entryway, and then you will turn right where you will be buzzed in. Very, very similar to what's in place at the middle school right now. You'll walk in, they will greet you, they will check your ID, you will get your sticker, and they will buzz you in. And this, I've met with a few contractors, there are some complications that go along with this. We've got some heating pipes and some sprinkler pipes that are in that vestibule area. Some local contractors have looked at it and told me that it's just beyond the scope of their capabilities. I am meeting with the other contractor from the cities tomorrow morning. So, my hopes are that we will have this done before school, but I will have a better idea probably after a couple of weeks after I hear back from this contractor and perhaps one more. Yes?
While we're on this, could you mind if we ask a question?
Oh, go ahead.
So, with that little sort of wrench in the plan, does it make it to where it may not be workable, or if it is workable, will it increase the cost of the project? How are you feeling that it may kind of come out in the end?
Because of the plumbing issues and things?
Right, right, yeah.
It's not that large of a glitch, I guess. The pipes are all exposed, it's just a matter of, the local contractors that we've used for other projects just weren't comfortable working on fire systems.
Okay.
And things like that. And the, it's rather tight constraints there, so it's not quite, it's not as easy as like putting some pipes into a big soffit like this. It's very tight, the room to work in is very tight, and they just weren't comfortable presenting a price to do it.
It's one of the, when you retrofit, it's not surprising that you get that sort of challenges.
Yep.
Any more questions?
Margaret? I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you don't mind if we just kind of, I think we all get.
No, Margaret had her hand up, so I actually, I didn't see Amy, sorry.
Go ahead, Amy.
I was just wondering about, I know the hallway is kind of very busy and narrow there already for the students. Should have turned on. So, having been there accidentally during passing time, I know that's a very full area, and how will that affect the student traffic flow?
The glass partition will only go, I believe it's about six feet over, so it doesn't protrude actually into the hallway. If you look to the upper right, you'll see that opening where there's two double doors there. That actually leads to the office area down that hallway. And so, what we'll be basically doing is extending the wall that the high school office, the outside wall of that high school office, is just extending that down to that entryway. And one thing that Joel Lear and I have discussed also, as part of the new flex lunch period and creating some more flexible and creative spaces, what we've been talking about and discussing is, you'll see in the upper part there, you'll see that real thin line, and that's the glass wall that separates the entry from the cafeteria.
All the way to the top of the grine.
Yep, all the way at the top of the grine.
So, not the hallway, but go further to the top of the picture.
So, Joel had considered having those, that entire glass wall removed, creating a huge opening then. That would allow us to reconfigure the cafeteria seating, perhaps install some smaller, higher collaborative desks for students to work at and team up with each other and work at throughout the day and not just lunch. It really opens up that space tremendously, and so we had considered taking down both those glass walls, the one between the upper and lower cafeteria and this one at the front entryway.
So, I'm still not sure, are you telling me that this new entryway does not use up any of the hallway space as it currently stands?
Not, well, it does, about six feet of it.
And how wide is the hallway?
I know that the larger part of the hallway is, I think, 10 or 11 feet.
So, it's taking up half the hallway?
No, we've got another, probably five feet beyond that on the other side of that fire door. It's not really taking up a usable part. There's, anytime you go down there, there's not really students that travel right next to that wall and then make that.
Yeah, because people are coming in.
It's a little bit of tuck-in, too. I mean, it's right when you walk in that door, if you look to the right, it's kind of where that energy star plaque is.
It is, it's where the plaque is, and then that one window that's there to the outside. And I think it's maybe 15 feet long there. So, it's not going to, it's, I don't foresee it causing any huge traffic jam. That's not a real congested passing time area anyway.
Okay. And I like the idea of moving, removing the glass wall into the upper cap. And I guess, I'd like to just ask that before the glass wall between the two caskets remove to consider, there's often two events that are happening at the same time, you know, and they, like, we just had the lacrosse banquet at the same time, there was another sports banquet in the other one, and we could overhear each other a little bit as it was, but I might lose that possibility of having two distinct spaces if you.
Yep, and we had discussed that. Things are, this part of the work is not set in stone by any means. There's still a lot of things that we have to discuss, that and that was one of them, about during activities. But I think Mr. Lear's main focus is on the student body during the day and the function of that area to enhance the day for the students, and with the activities being the secondary piece at night.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, this door symbol at the bottom left, that's the eastern-facing, what we call the main door.
Correct. Yep, door number one.
The steps coming in from the left in blue threw me off.
That is just the line of where you will live and travel.
And then, as you move to the right into that area with the red benches, there used to be a brick wall there. That's what I think I'm seeing.
The man, yep.
There was a brick wall, and I think that's Kerry Dupa's office.
It used to be Kerry Dupa's office.
Yes.
Now a social worker's office right now.
Okay, so, if we're losing that office space, are we gaining it someplace else?
That is going to be looked at as far, we're going to be reconfiguring a portion of the production room.
I beg your pardon?
And to the north, there is a lot of wasted space. There were some old cabinets and sinks and cupboards that are empty, and yes.
And where do you get buzzed in?
Well, again, this is a concept.
Yeah, it's what he's thinking.
And our ideas have changed a little bit, if you'll just allow me.
Please, yes.
So, one of the options that we're looking at, instead of having this opening go all the way through to this office, this wall would remain here, and we would have an entrance like at the middle school where it is a window.
Yep.
And so, the person would then be buzzed in and go through a door that's approximately here.
And be into the school proper?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Who do you envision being there?
So, they would enter this way, they would enter that way.
Who do you envision being there? An admin assistant or?
Yeah, well, right now, we have the doorman.
Oh, okay, I see.
And so, I don't know, you know, Joel will have to, will have to work on that, who's going to staff that.
Okay.
As far, you know, I know at the middle school now, they've reconfigured their office enough that, you know, Jen just gets up and buzzes the person in and greets them and gets them their sticker.
Okay, thank you. I just, I like you. So, I just had one more question. At the middle school, once, like, during the evening when you go to a restaurant, you don't have to go through that, so I assume at the high school, if people were coming for banquets, then there would still be the doors just.
Yes, we'll still have two sets of double doors that are there.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed.
I knew that one could take a while, so that's fine. I know there's a lot of questions.
It's good to do, rather than go back just to go through them at the time, so.
Trying to be creative and do this on a budget is a conflict, so. Another, probably the largest project we're doing this summer, this is an aerial view in the middle school drop-off loop. The old configuration, there are two large circles, both with plants and trees on them. This is the new configuration. Let's see, we have a net gain of about 53 parking spots here, plus we're moving our handicapped areas actually close enough to be considered usable. I feel that the way it is configured now is really not practical. And I, you know, I know, at some point, we haven't determined yet if there's going to be two rows of visitor parking or just that top front row, but Greg Gellino is working on that to determine that, so. And as part of this, too, we just relocated 15 of the trees from this area and moved them, we moved some of them to the tennis courts here just today, four of them to Bridgewater, and then we relocated some more at, on the middle school property. So, we will have to cut some down, but we worked with the best remover that I understand that's around, and he advised us on what to do, and I think it turned out really well, so we saved what we could.
Will some of these also be for traveling staff? I know there's a lot of traveling staff there.
Yeah, I know the details of those, we are having some bollards put in the cement posts so that we can put some signage up for visitors and traveling, and I'm kind of leaving that up to Greg and his staff at the middle school to his best advice there.
Well, here's that new office.
Yes. So, last year, we ordered one of these, it's the Mamavah Lactation Suite. This one is currently at Longfellow. It works very well, and we've just had such an increasing level of difficulty providing room spaces that were federally mandated to for breastfeeding and things. So, this was the best solution. We can move these wherever we want to. They're portable, they're very comfortable and roomy inside, and I've just had nothing but positive remarks from this one. That's all the pictures I could come up with today. I spent most of my day doing key distributions since my assistant has left me last week, Stephanie DiAdder left, so I did owe her a lot, made my first day back from vacation a lot easier, but I did spend a lot of it distributing keys. So, some other projects that we have going on, just to touch on a few more, we've got some flooring going on in some, got a bathroom in Greenville, some flooring in the preschool areas and the bathroom area at Longfellow on the first floor, some sidewalk repair and some sidewalk replacement on the north side at Greenville Park. The air intake grills up on the roof of the middle school, as it turns out, were installed improperly when the building was constructed, and so for all these years, the building's been taking on water from those areas. So, those air intake grills are going to be repaired this summer. We are placing a UV light at the middle school pool to sanitize the water. The outcome of this, the water basically passes through the UV light, it sanitizes. The benefits of this are, we won't have to use so much chemical, and we won't have as much chemical byproduct smell. So, we're getting better water and better air. A lot of places are going to this system now, and it's simply a matter of replacing the light bulbs every couple of years, so it's a good thing. Another project in the middle school, we are working on getting some water pressure stabilization pumps installed. I probably have mentioned it before, I think, at a meeting, that we have some low water pressure at the middle school. What this will allow us to do, it'll buy us as much time as we need to have high enough water pressure to flush all the toilets on all the floors until at some point the city decides that growth of the community requires a new water tower on the south end of town. The high school and the middle school, we're replacing classroom door handle hardware. Part of that is, a lot of the high school has aged. We rekeyed a couple of years ago at that, and we're still having some difficulties with some of the locks because of that. And this is combined with a security feature, so what we're doing is we're replacing the deadbolt-style locks. So, all the classroom locks, we'll be able to lock from the inside of the room without having a key. So, in case of emergency, the teacher or anyone in the room can simply just flip the lock like you would at your home, flip your deadbolt. But the room will still be accessible with a key from the hallway, so there's, there's no chance of someone being locked in. We are doing some concrete floor and sidewalk repairs at the high school. That actually started today. Door eight and nine, the boys locker room door, we had a large piece of concrete fall off of that balcony last winter. Actually, I have a fun video clip of it, we caught it on camera.
I'm not trying to call it a fun video.
Well, it is, it's quite alarming when you see it. Thank you, Matt, I shouldn't have.
An interesting video clip, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Wow.
So, we're working on that. That started today. And at Sibley, we are having some metal cladding installed on the upper methane mechanical rooms. We're having a lot of issues with the bricks up there. It's not visible from the street, and there's nothing structural, that's a problem at the current time. But rather than spending a lot of money tuckpoing something and having it not even be visible, we are going to cover it with a metal cladding, which is a pretty typical way to fix this for a lot less money. No structural problems at all from doing this. It won't be bright pink, we'll pick a nice color that matches, but honestly, I don't even think you'll probably see it from the street, so. And at the high school here, we are replacing some sinks and fixtures in some science classrooms. I think we're doing four sinks in one of the rooms with some different, a different style. They do different experiments now than they did back in the early '60s, and so the needs are different, and so they're needing some different styles of things. As well as this, these projects, we also have some LED outdoor lighting that our electrician is working on. We've got some cabinets at the Greenville Park Art Room that are being replaced, and we're doing some ongoing pottle repairs. And at Memorial Field, when you attend some games this fall, you'll notice the seal coating will be done in front of the concession area there. It's really starting to fall apart, so we're going to have that fixed this summer, so. Doesn't sound like much, but that's all.
Yeah, we disagree with that a lot.
Any questions?
Yes, so, work members' questions. Margaret?
I'm just looking back at the kitchen. Will you take off those rubber mats? I know they're bare, but they're also good for people's knees and backs when they're standing a lot. Are you going to replace it with anything? That's cushiony.
No, we had talked with the workers there, and they're, yes, those mats serve two purposes. They do, they collect the food, and they also collect the water, and they also are cushioned. But quite honestly, they don't spend enough time standing in front of that dish machine for the, for the comfort to become an issue. They're, in fact, it's the opposite of that, they're moving back and forth so much in there, and that's why the slip and fall is more of a danger than the standing.
And they're moving racks over there, hurting their backs by.
Well, right, they're trying to move the racks, and the racks, the floor mats get jumbled up on the racks, and, yeah, it's.
I imagine, too, that they are required to have non-slip shoes to work with.
Yes. But a lot of the kitchens are the same glazed tile, which are slippery when wet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work, you and your staff.
I have great staff, thank you.
Amy?
So, I have a question about the tennis court resurfacing.
Sure.
Actually, I'm delighted you're doing tennis court resurfacing. My husband runs the summer tennis group that plays there. But I also, since I live just north of the high school, I know there are a lot of students who walk around the tennis courts and to get to the high school every day. And I know there are issues with how the tennis courts work, but I just wanted to ask, as you're going through the process, if you could keep in mind that there are students who are walking there every day, twice a day, and around those tennis courts, and try to remember to make that as walkable as possible. to remember to make that as walkable as possible while still doing everything else you have to do with the tennis courts.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, yeah, the company, the same company that did ours at the middle school last year, they're from Nebraska. It's the only company I could find that actually offers a warranty on their work. We had no issues at all with them last year. They're very professional, great with the communication part of things. If we have any issues at all, it's just a matter of just going out there and talking to them, and they'll make whatever arrangements they need to make. The biggest area, I think, that you might be talking about is that big swale in between the courts.
Right, that's certainly where it gets the most slippery.
Yeah, and so we probably will have, and you know, and they'll rope that off as a work area, and so that really won't be accessible while they're working on it.
Well, I'm thinking during the school year, and I even was looking at it earlier today, just briefly, but the idea struck me that maybe instead of having the kids walk through that swale, they could keep walking straight along both sides of the tennis courts and then cut over. It would be about the same thing.
Oh, adding some paths, you mean?
Yeah, or somehow making it so it would...
It comes up by that little basketball court.
Okay, and then come around the basketball court and come in that way. Just because I, you know, I know it can get so slippery, that swale area, and also...
Yeah, it's really, we can't like get any machinery in there to plow it, so. And it needs to have that for drainage, because there's such a huge area of, you know, non-removable surface there that the water has to go somewhere. That leads to some of our ponding in front of the, on the east side of the building there. Everything just runs to those, I think there's four drains, and it just fills up.
So I'm not asking for a solution tonight, but just to keep that in mind, because you're working on that area, and yeah, I don't know if the path along there might work.
Can't put the east side that would be plowed back to that neighborhood path.
Like on the other side of the courts?
On the east side, all the way down Pine Beermans and all the way to the little basketball court, so that all those kids who use that little neighborhood path could then keep walking to school safely.
Oh, yeah, we can look into that.
That would be great.
That would make better sense than trying to keep, because we do keep plowed what we can get to right now.
Right, and that's been a big help. Thank you for doing that the last couple of years.
Yeah, I can, I'll look into that, and we'll see how much property we have there and what we can do with that.
That would be great, and I don't know, if you make a path, does it have to be a certain size for handicapped accessibility, or can you sort of know that it's pretty much teenagers walking through there?
Yeah. If there's handicapped accessible ends, you know, at the end of each path where the curb cuts are, if there's handicap accessible there, you know, then it has to be, I believe it's a minimum of four feet. But for us to really maintain it in the wintertime and plow it without ruining everything, we need probably a six or seven-foot wide path, so. A little more expense, but again, that's, in order for us to maintain it well, well enough to use it throughout the school year, that's, we would have to have something that is wide enough for us to plow.
Okay.
But yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to keep that sort of at the forefront of your plan when you're thinking about that area, and that's all.
And since it's outside the courts, it really, it wouldn't have the same surfacing as the courts have now, so it really wouldn't have to be incorporated, you know, with that project anyway, so. But yeah, that's something to consider, and I'll make note of that. Sure.
Other questions? Ellen?
I just have comments, so I just am really pleased, and I was thinking about, you know, we had, the bond didn't go the way we wanted, and you're like, what's next? And I think about our strategic plan, and you look at the projects that you have and the name of the student experience, and every student, you know, making sure every student is accessible, it's safe, that they're, you know, the flexible learning spaces, so I guess I'm just, just congratulations, this is a really nice set of projects, and I really appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you. I have a great staff, and again, my predecessors have done a lot of this legwork before my arrival here. But yeah, I mean, we're always working towards the best experience, and you know, as our tenure plan indicates, you know, there are several million dollars worth of projects here at the high school, and you know, we just have to pick on what to move forward with.
Excellent comment, Ellen, thank you.
Thank you so much for the report. I have a question regarding the elevator to the weight room. What is the, what is the access control on that?
As far as, I guess I'm not following.
Who can use it?
Anyone can use it. If you have a wheelchair, if you have crutches, so, or if you just want to ride it. I mean, it's...
So there's, I think what Noel was asking is if they're...
It's not locked, no, no, it won't be locked. But you know, my understanding is, at the middle school pool, we've had no issues at all with people abusing it, and I know that the weight room is well-supervised, and I think the people that will be using it and the teachers that are associated with that, with those, with those kids are really going to appreciate it, so I know they'll go out of their way to make sure that it's used properly.
That's probably the answer I'm looking for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, just to be clear about all the elevators in the district, the other one that we have here at the high school and the one at the middle school, and then one at Longfellow, so I don't believe that there are any access restrictions to any of those elevators, and I think that our administrators and our teaching staff and other staff have done a really good job of helping people understand who's appropriate to use the elevator and who's not. That doesn't mean that there isn't a person from time to time that may, could use the stairs versus that, but I don't think we've had any issues with it. I think that we, I'd have a concern about locking someone out of using it when they really needed it, if that makes sense.
Or the spec ladder.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's the only picture I could find. I don't, please don't mistake the ladder as the lift.
That's not the current solution.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Detective Homan? I just want to thank Ellen for her comment about the what's next, because I think, you know, that's our personal, my personal philosophy that thankfully our staff adopted. And I do want to make, take a point, just to mention the high school, because something Noel Stratmon has said over the years is that why would the community consider investing more in our schools if we don't take care of what we have? And so, yes, you know, we did have a proposal for a new high school. It did, it was not successful in terms of the vote, the way we wanted to go, but we're not sitting around, we're not going to let the building deteriorate. That would be, it would just not be appropriate. We believe very much in being good stewards, you know, of the facilities that we're entrusted with, so as we said all along, you know, we had a substantial amount of work on the tenure plan, and that work has continued forward. So I know some folks in the community may, you know, may think, oh, I wonder if they'll let the building go. We would not ever let the building go, because that would not be good stewardship of the resources entrusted to us. And I think that we've proven to the community over and over that we are good stewards of the resources entrusted to us, and we also look at how can we do those projects that make the best bang for the buck against our strategic plans. I really appreciate you calling that out, Ellen, and that I just really want community members to know that, you know, our tenure plan continues forward, and the high school, which of course is our largest building in terms of square footage, is going to have a substantial amount of projects. So I'm really pleased with the work that Jim has done to make sure he continues to prioritize what are the most important next projects, because there's always more projects than we have money. But when we look each year, there's a group that says, okay, here are the ones that make the biggest difference for kids and for safety and all those things moving forward, ranging from something, I mean, that we have dealt with some issues with the middle school pool for a number of years. Jim has shared two things that they're going to fix, you know, the UV light piece, I think that that's a huge thing, and anyone who uses the pool will really appreciate that. I just, I'm really pleased with the fact that we are reprioritizing every year based upon what are the most needed things, and just want to reinforce with the community that, you know, we will continue to do the repairs and the updates and those kinds of things on our schools, because they're important to do.
Excellent, thank you everyone for your comments. Jeff?
Just one question, thanks for your report and all your work. As far as the entrance to the high school, what does that do or not do as far as concerns for our security for a great entrance?
Well, again, it'll, it'll be basically exactly what's, what has happened at the middle school right now. So during the day after the students arrive, the other doors, which unfortunately are not in this photo, there's two other sets of double doors to the left of this where the students enter. Those will lock at a prescribed time when this, after the students arrive, and all the other outside doors are locked. So for anyone to gain access to the building, this will be the only way to get in. You will have to come through. That is a glass area. There won't be any hiding. The glass is treated with the security film, so you can't just hit it with a hammer and lock in. You will have to be vetted at that window, whether it's ID or that is yet to be determined, but then you will sign in, you know, and I know at the middle school, they ask, you know, what student are you here for? Why are you here? Are you picking up? Or, you know, what your particulars are, and then they give you your sticker.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would tell you to have a wonderful, relaxing summer. We hope you have that, despite all of the work that you're going to be doing, so thank you.
As long as the dates work out, everything is great.
That's right.
And the weather.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, excellent, so we'll move on to our next item for discussion, which is recapping and talking about next steps around the July 7th work session. So I will kind of recap where we, what our discussion was, and we'll talk about how we'll move forward. So thank you to the board for a really great discussion that we had that night. We all had an opportunity to share our perspective and discuss, you know, how and when we move forward in implementing all or part of the master facilities plan. We reviewed the summary data from the facilities action team. As a reminder, that was a representative group of district stakeholders. Key takeaways from that group was strong support for moving forward with the elementary projects in November of 2018, as well expressing their view that there was some additional time that was needed before going back to the community for the high school. So to that end, board members noted support around moving forward with the elementary projects around two key issues, the space issues that that, those projects address, as well as security issues. We did also have a fair amount of discussion around the high school and not moving in the direction of moving forward with that question on the bond, rather just isolating a single question around the elementary school. Talked about the opportunity that we have to really be, continue to educate the community around the needs of the high school, having some opportunities, I think Jim pointed some of those out tonight, in terms of the flex hour that the high school will have next year and around the challenges the flex hour brings for the current building, as well as other, you know, issues going forward, and really talking about continuing. I mean, we were very explicit when we talked about the bond and in November of 17, and talking about how, you know, needs will not go away. And if the community talked about, you know, next steps, you know, we said, you know, whether all or part of the bond projects move forward, the needs that have been articulated in the master facilities plan will not go away. We still have those needs. We still remain committed to the master facilities plan. We understand addressing the elementary piece potentially in November, that we still have a high school that has significant challenges, yet we have some opportunities going forward to continue in earnest to educate our community around those issues, and then as well as having some, some real pilot opportunities, really with flex hour, to really evolve a 21st century learning experience for our students on a daily basis, and the challenges to, to really making that as positive as it can be for our students. We also talked briefly about a potential of renewing the capital projects levy and what the board's support might be for addressing that in November as well, and the board decided that we would not pursue renewing the capital projects levy at this time, but would keep that, those, you know, the expiration of that levy as we move forward, you know, continue to watch that and look at potential other opportunities prior to 2023 to look at renewing, but we wouldn't move forward with that now. We had a great opportunity to review thought exchange, as a potential for moving forward and getting some, some real quick feedback on going forward with the elementary project in November of 18. We were able to provide some good feedback for Dr. Hillman. We understand that that will actually go out to parents, hopefully yet this week, as well as the postcards to the community with some of the noted changes that we had, that we had noted for Dr. Hillman. We do, still anticipate those results will be available for our July 9th board meeting and table file. We also, I had the opportunity to view the tax impact table and noted that it would be a 20-year bond for thirty-six, thirty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand on a 20-year bond, and the average homeowner in the district being around a $250,000 house would be $119 per year. So as we move forward tonight, we'll have opportunity, as we presented so many different, board members sharing their thoughts and having the opportunity to reflect on, on board members' comments, that we would want to do that tonight, continue the dialogue, as well as maybe figure, as well as if we move forward, where board members are in terms of their comfort level around the information, you know, knowing that thought exchange will still provide some, some more information, but around the information that we've had to date, what other additional information board members might need to feel comfortable moving forward, and if we feel comfortable moving forward with not a formal vote, but really a consensus that we could come to for our July 8th board meeting in order to give Dr. Hillman and team opportunities to, if we are moving forward in November of 18, to begin preparing all of that, and then subsequently in our August board meeting, we would move forward with a formal vote for the ballot language at our August 13th board meeting. So really now, just sort of moving forward from what our discussion was and giving board members an opportunity to continue the dialogue, and also really talk about what other information each board member feels they need in order to, if we do move forward, to get to the point where we would take that final vote in August. So that's the recap, unless board members have some other, other things. I will also mention that board member Annie Gorwitz was not able to be there, but she did have the opportunity to talk to me before she left, so I was able to express all those your notes and thoughts to the board, so that was part of the discussion. So, good for you.
And I just want to, on the thought exchange, because I have re-recorded the video, or I've edited it back down, and I really appreciated the feedback. What I did is I went back and I took some of the slides that we used with the bond referendum presentation last fall, that breaks one project down per slide, so I think that that makes it a little bit less busy, updated the slides, and so it's a little bit north of four minutes, but you know, nothing terrible, or doing all the post-video processes and getting that the thought exchange. I'm hopeful that we will get it out later this week, but I just want to let people know it may very well push into next week, just with some of those things, and so again, I'd rather make sure that we have everything, you know, ready upfront, so we will do everything we can to have some kind of information for you at the first meeting in July, but you know, if worse comes to worse, I can always let you have it well in advance of the August. As soon as we were to get it, we could share with you the login that you've seen before, so you'd have a chance to start interacting with it. But I think we've made some good changes, you know, to the potential questions at the last meeting, and we're just getting it all ready to go, so.
Just as a side note, then, the timing of the postcard, how would that...
So my goal is that when we have, the day that the email would be sent to parents, that's the day that the postcard would also get sent, so usually you figure it takes a few days, though I was thinking about the number of postcards, because we're sitting at every board, it's pretty substantial, so you know, to get those printed, which the Carlton Print Shop that we use has a pretty quick turnaround time for that, especially at this time of year. But the goal would be that the day we send the email to parents within the district, that the postcard also goes out. That way, you know, when voters get that card, if they go in and have not gotten the email, there should hopefully already start to be some thoughts in the system, so that they will avoid that issue that we saw about being one of the real early people in the process and having to come back. So I think that, you know, it's going to be open for 12 or 14 days, I think it is 10, 12, or 14 days, so people, when they get the postcard, would still have a full seven to 10 days to be able to offer their thoughts, which I think is, I think is substantial enough.
Excellent. Any other questions on thought exchange that we've already got there?
And just to be clear, too, for, you know, folks watching at home, there's no charge additional to the district for this, because we're using one of the exchanges that is part of our existing contract, so there's no... So there's no additional cost to do this like there would be for, you know, another randomized stratified sample survey. So just so, you know, folks at home know that we're not spending additional dollars on this. It's something that's already part of our contract.
Excellent. Just a point of clarification, the postcards are not part of the contract, though, right?
That's correct. Yes, thank you. So we will pay the postage and the printing for that. And I think one of the things, you know, we always try to learn from everything that we do. And one of the things that we heard last fall, you know, was really about, people commented that we had quite a bit of communication, but there were some suggestions about strategies that could bring people into the process more often and earlier. And we really kind of latched on to this postcard strategy, where it's actually quite inexpensive to print and send a postcard. I'm calling it the postcard plus web strategy, because, you know, you're sending something to people, you're calling their attention in a very basic way, and then you're providing a QR code and a link that they can go to a website for additional information. So we think it's kind of marrying the best of print and the best of the web at the lowest cost possible. It'll be, it's not going to be fancy. It's going to be a single colored postcard, black and white. It may be on a colored paper. It's whatever they have, the cheapest at the point. But it's going to be done on a budget. We're going to make sure that people understand that. But hopefully, if we're actually looking at, how could we potentially do this several times a year to help draw people's attention to some information on the website that could give them an update about what's happening in the school district?
Excellent, thank you. So board members, questions, comments around the discussion we had and your thoughts about moving forward with the bond project?
I think it was a good recap. Thank you. Can you hear me? Sorry. I think that was a very good recap, and I'm very happy with our discussion the other night. And I'm ready to move forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Amy?
Well, I'm so sorry, I missed the discussion. I had already had a pre-scheduled trip out of town and missed that this meeting was scheduled. And I guess I see myself as an advocate for keeping the high school on the ballot as a separate question. And instead of us saying no to ourselves to give the voters a chance to have the full scope of options. I hear what they, what I heard from everything that we went through and all the process was people want a choice. And this is a way of providing them the choice and the options. And so I'm sorry I missed the details of the discussion because I really think that I would have liked to have been there to be able to talk more about the high school and how the high school might be involved in this process.
Well, if you want to elaborate, please do so. Because we're, you know, we're kind of still in discussion, so we should.
Great. Well, I just see, we still have the Master Facilities Plan. The needs aren't going to go away. Though Jim's certainly doing a lot to help in little areas here and there. Thank you again for that. But the cost of the high school is going to continue going up and up and up. And within a few years, it will probably be over $100 million. And if people had sticker shock at $78 million, there, once it hits 100 million, I think it may be that much harder for people to pass. Also, I think we have a, we have a city of people who value education. We have two colleges here. We also have a lot of people who attended Northfield High and live in Northfield now. So we have a well-educated electorate. And I think they can handle understanding all the different options. You know, if we tell them, we can go ahead with a high school now and it'll cost you whatever the current amount is, 90 million.
95 and a half.
95 and a half million. Or we can wait two years and come back in two years, but it's going to cost you $95 million, you know. But if you want to wait two years, we can do that. I think, I think people like choice and options and that we have a strong base of support in this town for the high school. And I think we can explain all of this to people and let them choose. Now, I also agree, and I think there's been a consensus, that the elementary project does now have priority. In the last year, certain new things have come up to make that the higher priority. And I definitely see that should be our first priority. But I don't think we should say no to the high school. I think we should give the voters an option because we're going to go through all of the same work anyway. And I think there are people out there looking for the high school now, too. And you mentioned, I mean, I like the group, the Facilities Action Team. I think we got a lot of excellent input from them. And I think they did represent a lot of different pockets of the community, but I don't think they were a random sample, you know, that we can take exactly how they voted to be how the community as a whole will vote. The only way to really know how the community as a whole will vote is to ask the community.
Yes, Jeff?
I was here for that discussion. We did, we did kind of lean towards the one question. But I mean, I just think that putting the high school on there too, you know, it was a huge, huge ask the last time. But I just think if you really want to get the point across to the public, if you ask the one question, if you just keep it more focused on that. I'm totally not for asking for anything about the high school this time. If you want to go back in 2020 and leave that alone, if it's another X million, billion dollars, so be it. But I think if you're very focused on what you want for these elementary improvements, and if you push that into another question and get the voter's mind off of the one thing you're really asking for, you know, you're, you know, you might lose the whole thing. I mean, I don't know, I just think from a data standpoint, making a decision, you know, this is the time to ask, flat out, upfront. Keep it simple, ask for the elementary improvements, so.
I think it's important to keep the high schools on the plate.
They know it's on the plate. People know it's on the plate.
Because if we don't ask for it now, but then we come back and ask for it two years later, they'll be like, you're always asking us for money. You're always asking us for money.
But why do you have to put that into a question if you wanted to say that, that you could put future projects that are still on there? You could still promote that as a thing that you know that's coming next and that's going to be an ask. You just don't need to put it on the ballot. I mean, you can promote it. I mean, go ahead and promote it however you want to promote it, but just don't put it as a question on the ballot, if you want to. I just think it's just, it's just too much. Because, I mean, the feedback that I got from a lot of people, even anger, is the point of just, you're really asking for too much money with the levy, the other one, all of the stuff that we had on that last, this is too much. And I think that if you're pushing that point and you're pushing that again, I mean, every two years, you're just, bam, bam, bam. It's just too much. I mean, I think Northfield taxes are way too high to begin with, compared to other cities. So, you know, it's, the elementary thing, I think with a lot of need, I mean, there's a lot, not that we don't need a new high school, but, I mean, that is a very, I mean, you're just really getting into a lot of different issues. And I think that if you keep it simple on asking for the elementaries, you're going to get a direct answer, and that's going to be your direct vote. I mean, two years goes by in a hurry, you come back and get an answer, high school. Otherwise, you just look like a money grab. And you got the, city's going to come out. I don't know how that's going to be out with the ice arena. I mean, that's another thing on there. The people, the people in town, the little town just get hammered on stuff like that. I mean, it's all, you know, and you just say, I mean, I hate to say it, but only another 100 bucks on your taxes, only another. Well, that's the same thing you're saying over there for the city building, only another. So you add up all the onlies, and, you know, it's a pretty big number. I just think that's a more responsible ask, but that's my opinion.
Other comments? No.
I don't.
No, make sure we can hear you in the mic.
I don't think there's any way, with construction costs as they are, that we can avoid sticker shock for a new high school. The inflation rate is, on good times, is 2% or 3%. Oftentimes, it's going to be 5% or 6% during times of catastrophes. And I also don't believe that sticker shock was the issue as much as the fact, I think we didn't make a case for a new high school. We had a lot of people that talked, I talked to a lot of people that said, you know, that they go to the events, they go to the theaters, they go to the football games, the basketball games, everything looks great. Why do you need a new high school? Well, that isn't the issue. That's not why we need a new high school. We need a new high school because the learning style has changed and our facilities aren't adaptable or keeping up with them. And I don't believe we should bring the high school onto this one. I'm not sure logic can ever, is a proper foil for sticker shock. It certainly shouldn't be moved at the ballot that way. That's my thoughts.
Can you explain your last, you don't think logic is proper foil for sticker shock? So my logic, or am I, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't think we can logically make a case for the high school without explaining what we need. And we didn't explain what we needed the last time. We just hit them with the price. And that's why I'm saying, I don't think, like, the logic is not a good foil for sticker shock.
So that's why we didn't get it last time. But could we explain this time? If we did have it on the ballot, do you think we could explain it better?
I think we'd explain it better, but I agree with Jeff that we're going to start annoying the people in big time. And I'm not ready to go there.
Margaret? I'm thinking about what Noel said during our discussion. And again, I'm sorry you weren't at night, I didn't have to be there, Amy, because it was really a good work session. Is not to, not to give up goodwill with our voters.
Don't want to compromise them.
Don't want to compromise goodwill. And I'm thinking, last time we said, can you give us the elementary and the high school together? And they voted no. So I can't imagine that by separating them, that the vote would change. That's what I'm looking at. But I was also looking at the Facility Action Team response. And what I looked at under, when it said, bring back the same bond referendum, so that would be an elementary and a high school, 64% said, absolutely not.
That was in one question, though.
That was in one question. But then another question that said, don't replace the high school now, but assure the high school is adequate for the next 10 years with targeted modifications. 82% said they could support it or live with it. So when I look at that, and then they all said, not all, but it was a high percentage that said, bring us the elementary project. Move forward with the elementary project. 78% said, I can live with it or I'll support it. So what I'm hearing from the public and from this group is, we're very cognizant of the need of a new high school. We just can't afford it all at the same time. So let's muddle through with our high school the way it is. These high school kids can do it. The achievement gap doesn't happen there. But our achievement gap happens back here, and there's a huge need. Let's move with that. And then in 10 years, or whenever, let's come back. And also, I'm thinking, if we move ahead with the elementary, we pass that, it gives us a chance to breathe, to stop a minute, and maybe even consider ideas that aren't putting a high school there and tearing this one down. You know, are there other ideas? Just at the time, that was, we thought was the least expensive. It would give us a time to exhale, regroup, look at the high school project again with new eyes. So I think people are very aware. I think people are very aware that the price is going to go up. That's part of being an adult or a role. Prices have never come down, ever. So I feel people are aware of that. They're aware we need a new high school. But they're saying, just let us swallow this pill now. We'll address this one. You know it's there. We'll get there. That's what I'm hearing, from this group and from the folks I've talked to.
Here, you suggested what I would do. 2020, in the case that we didn't make, is like, boom, here's a new school, $80 million. And it's like, here's all this other stuff. It's like, man, you know, what's wrong with the old school? So, I mean, if you want a side-by-side, you've got, you know, your seven bullet points or three to seven for keeping the school the way that it is, making some improvements, and make this a 10-year deal, as opposed to, here's 85 million for a new school. You got to have that look at it. And I mean, it's a good, I mean, you have to look at that. And that's what the decision needs to be made in there. The case in 2020, why keep this 10 years and put some money into it as opposed to building something brand new? Could the argument be that for all the money that you're going to put into the improvements, you're going to, you know, you're going to end up paying that later anyway? But, I mean, for the fact of the matter is, I mean, you're talking about education. What's education look like in the next 20 years? And we're talking about $100 million. What can we do with $100 million that helps the students? I mean, we're used to building buildings and other things like that. And I mean, but, so I think you have, you have to give people the choice on that because there is a huge audience out there that says, you know, what's wrong with the high school?
Well, I guess my approach gave people maximum choice. My turn, that's fine. So.
But we just asked last year. It's just, you know, we just asked, wasn't even a year ago.
I guess if the high school was only, you know, if it was going to stay the same price for two or three years, it would make more sense to me that we wait. But I think when we're seeing the increases in price, the way they're coming through.
You're already sold on making the decision to do that. So you're making the decision based on price. And the sales trainer in me says, number one, no pain, no sale. So you're, you got to really sell that point, put salt on the wound if you wanted to say like, hey, boy, you really have a lot of pain and you really need a new high school. That's just not there. It's just not there right now. I mean, there's an empty lot sitting over there where we do need it. We need a new school. I mean, that is clearly the point. I mean, it's just, and it isn't like every two years, we just asked for this stuff last year. You know, it's just kind of like, is it too soon? I think it is, so, but, you know, that's, you know, it's not going away, obviously. And we'll keep asking, you keep asking that question, but, you know.
Ellen?
So just, I guess, I don't want to reiterate everything, but I guess where I had come on, would come to the decision was thinking about Dr. Hillman's presentation and really, I guess, going back to Jeff saying, very focused and by, everything that is on the ballot has to be part of the presentation. And that's where the questions are going to come up. And we didn't get as many questions about the elementary projects the focus was all, for the most part, the sessions I sat in on. So I guess, I think, Amy, to your point, you know, making sure that the voters know that we're not giving up on it. And I don't even know that we want to wait 10 years. I mean, that's like a really long time for the needs that we have. But, but I just think, I really want to see something pass. And having been on the phone with people that, you know, I always said my full name during the phone bank so they know who they were talking to. And people, I was surprised, that would have been supportive, just couldn't go there. It was just too big of an ask. So that's, I guess that's where I'm settling, is just, what can we be really focused on? And then I really appreciate, you know, what's going on at the high school. And that was one of the things that we talked about, the work session, was we'll have more data and evidence for how the building can't quite, you know, we're trying everything we can to do this flexible learning, and we'll have more data and evidence about what that looks like and then what the shortcomings of the building are. I mean, I guess in the perfect world, it would be great to just say we can get it passed this time. I just, I don't, I don't know what would be different, I think. And I want to see our elementary school pass.
Other comments board members have? So, well, everyone, thank you again for articulating your positions. And I think, you know, we had some good discussion. We will continue to move forward.
And just, so, board members, I did mention, you know, I mentioned that about the review and comment portion. Even though we're, you know, doing a project that was on the ballot for the most part last fall, we still have to go through the review and comment process. Val and I have a conference call tomorrow with Ellers on a couple of things. There is a possibility we may need to ask you to, you know, approve a review and comment submission at the July 9th meeting. Just because we submit the review and comment does not, you know, commit you to anything. But what we want to do is, we want to make sure that we get that in line. By statute, the Department of Education has 60 days to provide their feedback on the review and comment. I did speak with Chris Kubis from MDE last week. He said there will be far fewer, from what he's seen right now, there's going to be far fewer bond referendums this November. So he was, he was confident, even if we got it in in July, that we'd have it ahead of the, you know, ahead of the game, plenty of time. What we just want to do is, we want to make sure that we get that in. And again, that's good for a period of time. So if you were to choose to, you know, not go forward with this, it's not as if it's work that is really lost, frankly. We've done a lot of the work already. But just know that that may be something that we bring in July, just to ask you to, what you have to do is just, we think you would, we would want you to approve the submission of the review and comment. So that's just a piece that I know. So that's just a piece that will probably come at the July board meeting, and then, you know, there will be a handful of other technical things that we'll talk with you about, just what we need with timelines and those kinds of things. We don't have to call the election until later in August, you know, really the latest regular meeting would be that first board meeting in August that we have, without doing any kind of special meeting. But we are, we are planning some of the infrastructure to an informational campaign just because we're anticipating what your needs are. And again, if you come back and say, you know, we're not quite ready, it's not, it's not any skin off of our nose, we could, the work that we're doing, a lot of it's been done before, we're just updating it as we move forward.
So to that, to that end, then, so just to remind board members, this is our only board meeting in June, so the next time we convene for a regular school board meeting won't be Monday, July 9. So thinking about where board members may still need some more information in order to feel like we have a consensus at the July 9 board meeting. Again, the thought exchange information may be there, may not be there, we talked about how that would be a real good opportunity to really inform the informational campaign for the district, not necessarily, again, not scientific in terms of those who respond, that it would necessarily change our direction, but really provide some good information, but obviously wanting to review that, may or may not be available by our July 9 board meeting, but do board members feel then that we would have at least a consensus on how we want to move forward in November by that July 8 board meeting in light of a few additional weeks to continue to think about it, talk to those in the community about where we're headed, and also have an opportunity to get any more information from Dr. Hillman to help inform their decision?
I'm ready to go forward. I go over.
So I'm getting, so what I'm hearing, not hearing, is anyone objecting? So then I'm, I'm then sort of sensing that board members will be able to articulate their position at the July 9 board meeting, and then we'll, if that moves as we think it will, based on the discussion we've had tonight, then we would call for the formal calling of the election at our August 13 board meeting.
And just to be clear, I think we both, you and I, had used in interdependent terms of July 8 through 9, July 9, that I did look, so the meeting is July 9.
July 9, I'm sorry.
No, we've both been using, going back and forth, so I've got it.
It's my parents' 64th wedding anniversary.
July 9.
So last year it was on Monday, so I keep thinking, whatever, so I apologize.
We've both been doing it, so no, I just.
So it's Monday, July 9. Again, we have a nice little break now, between now and then, but the, you know, the Northfield News has been wonderful in giving coverage to the work session. Philip from the Northfield News was here, he did do a follow-up story. Dr. Hillman is on, you know, Kim Radio, and will be tomorrow, talking about this discussion. So I think people in the community know, you know, kind of what our discussion's been, they know we've had work sessions, so, you know, hopefully we have interactions in the community which are really, you know, very important for us to have as we kind of move forward in this next four weeks in really determining where we want to go.
I really appreciate the discussion. It's one of the things I love about this board, is the discussion that's, you know, so respectful yet passionate, so thank you for modeling what good civic discussion is supposed to be like.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so let's move on, then, we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. There were, actually, no person, oh, no, there was, there was a couple of things around overnight trips, et cetera, personal items. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve, moved by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Margaret? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go on, now, to items for individual action. We have a number of items specifically around budgets, but we'll begin first with the revised Policy 515 Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. We did do first reading at our previous May meeting, the May 29 board meeting. So is there a motion to approve the recommended change to Policy 515 Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records and Appendix C of Policy 515 as presented? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Amy? Any discussion on that policy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll work our way through now the budget motions, the first being the revised budget for child nutrition and community services. So is there a motion to approve the revised 2017-18 budget for child nutrition and community services as presented? Moved by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Ellen. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item would be around the proposed 2018-19 budget, all funds. Is there a motion to approve the proposed 2018-19 budget as presented for all funds? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Amy? Any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one comment.
Yes, now.
As I was pulling it together, I did notice on the child nutrition budget, there was a mathematical error for the ending fund balance for 1819. So 801-320 is the proposed ending fund balance, which was a little bit more than what was on the presentation. We are, I mean, it's well above the fund balance max, but again, we anticipate some changes with the flex period, and don't anticipate a problem, shutting it down, but it is different than the actual presentation, so I just wanted to pop that out.
So if we go back to page 15 of our, page 15, it shows the child nutrition fund, what line would we change?
The ending fund balance for the 1819 proposed budget of 801-320. That's the correct one, yes. The presentation in May was in effect.
Oh, I see, okay, excellent.
I just wanted you to know the number here is different than what was presented.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you. Questions, comments?
Comment, Val's a rock star.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent, yeah, this is just such a great report. And we can tuck it in, and we can have it with us, and we have, it's just really great. And we really appreciate the process that takes us down this road, and that we have, you know, we're, by state statute, we have to approve our budget by June 30th, so you take us, you know, well down that road over the course so that we can digest all the aspects of it, and so we really appreciate it. My pleasure. So we have a motion and a second. All those to approve the 2018-19 budget as presented for all funds, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As an item, the audit engagement letter. We need to do a motion to accept the 2017-18 engagement letter from Clifton, Larson, Allen in the amount of $23,700 plus expenses. Moved by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Ellen. So that information was in your packet, is there any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will, as noted in the beginning of the meeting, we will address item number five at the July 9 board meeting. So item number six is actually around calling for the school board elections that will be held on Tuesday, November 16, 2018. So is there a motion to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits on candidacy as presented? Moved by Jeff, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Amy. Okay, so is there any questions and comments around the, just obviously our routine piece that we do around school board members needing to file for candidacy?
What would that date be?
The, it begins July 31 and ends on the 14th of August, so that's included in the resolution. It's the standard state required dates for school districts that don't have primary elections. As you know, you may have seen in some other communities where they do have primary elections, those people have already filed. Several years ago, you chose not to hold a primary election, so July 31 through August 14 is the filing date, and of course, people have two days after the close of filing to say, oh, I didn't want to run. So those dates are included in the resolution.
So we have, any other questions? So we have a motion and a second, and this is a resolution, so it is a roll call vote. Gerwitz?
Aye.
Strachan?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Galangelo?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries. So items for information, we do have the end-of-year enrollment report that was in your table file, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so you see the end-of-year enrollment report, hot off the presses today, and you'll see that we finished the year with a grand total of 4171, 3984 of those exclusive of the early childhood and part-time or independent study ALC students. So that number at the bottom, 3984, is what we finished the year at.
Excellent, any questions or comments on the enrollment report?
I would like to make a comment.
Margaret?
I think that if any voter looks at this, and every report we get every time, is to quiet the notion that our enrollment is not increasing, or that it might even be decreasing, that obviously, based on numbers, it has been steadily increasing every month, every year.
And I think what you'll see is, this year, we did have a little bit of a total, it's, when you look at that bottom number, Margaret, we did have a decline through the year, but still, when we look at the year-over-year in our projections, especially when we go to the weighted pupil units, I think that's the key thing, that we still are on a track that is ahead of what our demographic report suggested. And just want to point out, too, that, you know, these are the actual numbers, and when we do our enrollment projections, which are so critical to the budget, we are, there are 13 different calculations, 17 different calculations that we could use, and we always use among the most conservative, right? Because we want to make sure that we are not, you know, projecting students who wouldn't be here. So while this year, you know, we saw a slight decline through the year of students who are not enrolled in our early childhood, you know, or are part-time in the independent study, we are still moving further down the road than we have in the past.
Exactly. Any other questions or comments?
I agree with everything you've said, but at the same time, if you look at the grand total numbers, they are growing up, and I know that includes part-time, but you have, there's a certain amount of time you have to invest in any student, whether they're part-time or full-time, and a certain amount of paperwork and a certain amount, so that's where your pupil units, I'm sure, affect it, but it does seem like the trend is definitely...
Yeah, and in the old days, we would have only given you the grand total, right? And so that secondary number, that was a piece that we modified this report, if you remember, last year, you know, to show the students who are matriculated in the K-12. I think the key part about the early childhood is what's good about seeing the difference in that number is you're seeing what is coming in the pike, remember? Because there's a lot, especially what we're seeing with early childhood in this particular report, we're specifically talking about early childhood special education students. So I think that that's an important, I think that breaking those numbers out, you know, that's a good distinction, and so you're seeing what's in the K-12, you're seeing what's overall total, and what is coming down the pike. So I think that having those two numbers is important because it shows you who we're generating money for in the K-12 system right now, in that total, that full-time excluding those part-time students, but at the same time, it's also showing you what is potentially coming down the pike as well. Good, but good feedback, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? So future meetings, as we discussed, we have a little bit of a summer break here. Our next meeting is Monday, July 9, and then we do only have one board meeting in July, so then that would be followed by Monday, August 13, and Monday, August 27, all at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So after a great meeting and great discussion, thanks to all the board members, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Margaret? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.